Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021, 1:31 PM. My name is Ty Answer, Chair of the Board. Vice Chair, Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Kevin Mieha, Wells County Manager, Amira Chavez, Community Planning Manager Jennifer Davis, Caitlin Nelson from our CPED staff and Angela Johnson on screen. She from CPED, both persons as well?
No, she is from the Department of Ecology.
Department of Ecology, okay. Well, great. This is a topic is public attendance is, it's public attendance first. Follow along livestream on the Thurston County YouTube channel or join by conference call at 360-252-9020, pin 1234. Today's topic is water resource inventory area, RIAA plan and stream flow, apostrophe S. Stream flow is something that we don't know of. Informational and I guess, Amira, are you going to start us off or should I take it to Jennifer?
Yeah, just a framing. Today, you're going to be hearing from the staff a little bit, an update on the WRA 14 as well as 13. Hopefully, we can spend time on the 13 a little more. Maybe we can start with the 14 because that seems to be a little bit more straightforward. And also on the WRA 13, you may recall, you entertained a meeting with the Squawson Island Tribe representatives last week where they provided some feedback. We also made copies for you on the language they're proposing to be incorporated on the plan. And knowing that perhaps the board always like to hear two, two different perspectives on any, on any particular issue. I've worked with the staff to reach out to representatives from the Department of Ecology and that's where Angela Johnson is here to provide our perspective from the Department of Ecology related to the proposed language that perhaps the Squawson Island Tribe is, is proposing. So, and that may be part of the conversation for the most part of this meeting. Jennifer?
Yeah, good afternoon. So I'm going to turn this briefing over to Kate in just a minute. She's going to walk through the two remaining RIAA plans in the county up for your consideration. So you were briefed previously on the RIAA 14 draft plan, Kennedy Goldsboro. We can finish up that discussion today and then we'll jump into the RIAA 13 Deschutes Watershed Plan. No final decisions are due today. We're happy to schedule a follow-up briefing as needed. Kate will go over some of the timelines we're, we're up against which are under statute. And just to remind you that all of these watershed plans, they're about ensuring that our watersheds remain healthy and have enough water supply for salmon, for agriculture, for at-home water use into the future, even as we grow and we drill more wells to serve folks that come to live in these watersheds. So each of these plans includes specific projects, so on-the-ground projects to try and offset or balance the books on that water use over time, what we're taking out of the system or conserving or putting back into the system. And they also include policy and implementation actions for how our community is going to address ongoing issues about water conservation, what to do in a drought, issues that affect water availability over time. So, you know, these plans have been built over many months and sometimes years by consensus with a really diverse group of participants. And if you look at the front of the, the draft plans you've been provided, the memberships of those groups are listed there. So you see it's, it's diverse. And each of these participants is currently doing what we're doing here, which is they're going to their boards and their leadership groups, just as we are with you, to ensure that there is support for these draft plans before these planning units for each watershed have a formal vote to submit the plans to Ecology. Ecology is the reviewer and approver ultimately of these plans. And Angela, thank you for being here today in case the board has questions about sort of Ecology's roles and timelines and process related there. We have updated the slides for today's briefing from what you were provided with some of the late-breaking information we received from the Squawson Island Tribe for RIAA 13. So the slides are going to have a little more to them than what was given out previously. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kate to walk through the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Let me share my screen. Good afternoon. Like we mentioned, I am going to go over the, well, we're going to do a follow-up on the Kennedy Goldsboro Plan, RIAA 14, and then we will get into doing an overview of Deschutes, RIAA 13. Both plans have a goal of submitting the plan in April and that would win, that would be when our planning unit vote is scheduled. And that is in order to allow enough time for Ecology to review and approve the plan by their deadline of June 30th of this year. To follow up on the Kennedy Goldsboro Draft Plan, the vote is scheduled for April 21st and there are no outstanding issues to date. So I would like to immediately open it to questions that you may have.
Hey. I have questions after Commissioner Mieha. I have questions.
Okay, Commissioner Mieha, you guys are too small on my screen for me to call you out one by one.
So I just had a briefing with, with Jennifer about this, basically a briefing before the briefing to try to break it down. So in regards to RIAA 14, I don't think I have any specific questions at this time. I know I do in regards to RIAA 13.
Okay, as to 14, Commissioner Edwards?
Well, I believe that my questions might be applicable to both drainages. But let me run this by those folks in the know just to see. As this plan was reviewed, were things taken into consideration like the recharge of the aquifer by homeowners and whatever depth they have their wells drawing from and the 90% recharge that might be taking place? In other words, if they're drawing water from a 300-foot well and 90% is going through the drain field and the irrigation system of their daily usage, that's recharging the upper stream flow and it's drawing water from a lower aquifer. So that would be one issue. Olympia, Lacey and Tumwater have many millions of gallons, and I can't hardly believe this, but it's like maybe daily of leakage from their deep well pumps into the system. So the water is coming out of a very deep aquifer and the leakage occurs in the upper stratosphere of the current in-stream flow area. And LOT pumps millions of gallons back into the in-stream flow area from wherever their water is coming from. And like out at Hawks Prairie, they're injecting water back into the aquifer. And in all of these cases or most of these cases, the water is drawn out of a lower aquifer and replenished into the in-stream flow upper aquifer. Was there any information discussed as this was developed on, I guess we're talking 14 now, but the same thing's going to apply to 13?
Yeah, those are, those are really good questions. I want to say that almost all of those were brought up at least once in a very broad way. They are items that are of concern to members of the planning unit. And I think ultimately after discussing it, it's generally decided that there isn't the amount of time and the amount of effort that members could put into, it put into those items before putting together a plan for approval, but that they are items that could be evaluated after the plan is approved and for implementation purposes. So I think it's definitely been discussed as items that members are interested in, but that this is more of a broad-scale approach. And so hopefully, some of these policies and actions and, and items that members would like to, goals that members would like to achieve would eventually get to those items. I want to say that those items aren't maybe specifically called out in writing in this plan, but having discussion with members, it's definitely on people's radars.
I guess I would, I would point out though, that the information is readily available at the state reporting site for all of the municipalities that show what that total leakage ends up being and how much is drawn out and how much, how many gallons that equals into the recharge. And I can see where it would be a little more difficult to do it on individual homes, but on all the Class B water systems or Class A water systems that have wells on file with the Department of Ecology, it's right there. You can look up the usage and just figure out that 90% of that usage is going right back into the in-stream flow. So I, I don't feel comfortable moving ahead, restricting people from being able to do their thing, whatever that is. And in most cases, their thing is going to be, it's going to average out to 350 gallons per day, 365 days a year, with 90% of that going back into the recharge if they've got an unsite septic system. So that's my concern about this whole thing, that we're bypassing a lot of facts to hurry the system through. And by hurrying the system through without all of the correct information, we're going to make some terrible errors that are going to impact citizens. And I think it's our obligation to discuss all potential ramifications, including, I mean, we could be up against litigation at some point if we don't take into consideration all the science. Not if, if we just take part of the science on any one of our presentations and disregard the rest of the science, I think we're hanging out there. So that's kind of where I'm at on this whole thing.
Well, to, to clarify, the Kennedy Goldsboro Plan at this time isn't proposing any limits to individual well withdrawals. That is language that we will discuss for the Deschutes Plan, involving the language that was recommended or requested by the Squawson Island Tribe. But I don't believe that the RIAA 14 Plan does limit individual residents and that some of the items that you mentioned are things that will hopefully be addressed at a programmatic level with the implementation of this plan.
Okay. And, and I recognize that it's going to be, mine is kind of generic overlay of all of them and it's probably not going to affect 14, but it's definitely going to affect our 13 discussion. So I just thought I'd throw it all out there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mieha.
I would just go ahead, go ahead.
I apologize. I just realized my question does affect RIAA 14 and 13. In terms of these two plans being multi-jurisdictional, I would want to know what the delay would be if one of those jurisdictions wouldn't pass this, if there's a Plan B, how does that work?
I'm wondering if, if Angela can maybe weigh in on that from an ecology process perspective? And if you've seen this happen elsewhere in the state where if, you know, you got to this point of the consensus-based draft plan and then one of the participating jurisdictions does not vote to submit per the timeline and what that would do process-wise?
Sure. I'm happy to answer that. Can you all hear me? Great. So within RCW 1994, the Stream Flow Restoration Law, it does-
Angela, Angela, can you introduce yourself and, and your role in the Department of Ecology, please?
Sure, absolutely. Sorry. My name is Angela Johnson. I'm a Stream Flow Restoration Planner in the Southwest region of Water Resources at the Department of Ecology. And I am the Chair of the WRA 13 and WRA 14 Watershed Restoration Enhancement Committees.
Thank you.
So within RCW 1994, the Stream Flow Restoration Law, it does state that if a committee is unable to agree to approve a plan, that there is an alternative pathway to adoption. And it states that Ecology will essentially complete the plan and will send the plan to the Salmon Recovery Funding Board for review and input. And then the, those recommendations will come back to Ecology, will take them into consideration, and the Director of Ecology will then adopt the plan and initiate rulemaking within six months to appropriately address any of the recommendations. So there is an, an alternative pathway to plan adoption if a committee does not approve a plan. Does that answer the question?
Yes. What would, what does that do to the timeline? I mean, because these are set on kind of specific timelines, are they not? And would something like that just completely knock it off? Would there be delays?
So, that's a great question. So the timeline in the law states that if, if, if a committee is, if approves, approves the plan, then Ecology has until June 30th of 2021 to adopt the plan. So that is that first pathway to plan adoption. The second pathway to plan adoption where the committee approves a plan, there really isn't a timeline stated within the law, except for that once Ecology completes the plan, then rulemaking will initiate within six months. Other than that, there really is not a specific timeline and I don't have that information from my management on, on what that timeline might be for Ecology at this time.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, Angela, but I want to point out that I believe it's essentially the same process if we don't come to an agreement as it would be if we missed the deadline. It's the same repercussions, correct?
That is correct, yes. If the committee is working to agree to a plan but cannot do so by the, by the deadline, does not have a plan to Ecology in order, and does not have adequate time for Ecology to review and adopt the plan by June 30th, then that alternative pathway would, would still apply for a plan adoption.
Thank you.
Ty, did you have something more? I was going to, could I do a follow-up there? I, I'm just curious, that is a issue statewide, is that right? I mean, so Ecology is going to be stuck with a whole bunch of them if they're not done on time, is that right?
So the Ecology-led process only applies to eight watersheds in the South Puget Sound. So that's WRA's 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 7, 8, and 9. And the, that is a separate process from, for example, the WRA 11 or WRA 22, 23 process, which has not been Ecology-led. So those eight watersheds that I just mentioned are on the June 30th deadline. And, but that, that still is eight watershed plans for us to receive over the next few months and review and adopt by June 30th. So it is, it is still a heavy workload.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Jennifer, what's next?
If there's no other questions, I do, I did want to have a brief response to Commissioner Edwards' questions about kind of the science and methodology. That's explained pretty well in the RIAA 14 Plan. You can find that in page H3. It talks about the consumptive use methodology, about how basically the calculations went. Because obviously, it's not assuming that all water taken into a domestic use situation is used and gone. Some of that does go back into the aquifer. That methodology and those calculations are explained in that. I believe it's Appendix H.
And that's on WRA 13?
That was, that was 14, starting on page H3, starts to talk about consumptive use.
But the information is in both plans, yes?
Yes.
Okay. When I, when Commissioner Edwards first started speaking, I thought he was talking about consumptive use. And that's obviously very, at least in Chaelis, very well calculated and planned, explicitly and directly accounted for. But then as I heard his comments unfold, it sounded like his comment really wasn't about consumptive use. It was about, it was about transference of water from deeper aquifer to either shallow aquifer or surface water and whether or not that, that as a concept offsets the impact as well. That's what I understood him to be asking. And that's not just a question about consumptive use. And I know that that's my understanding. And I'm not any kind of expert, but there's, I know that, what I understand is that that varies in terms of the connectedness between layers of aquifer and surface water based on proximity and the, and the hydrology and the geology of the, of the surrounding area really makes that complex to understand. Am I right about that?
Yeah. Did you say, am I right about that? I couldn't hear you very good.
Yeah, I was, I was asking Kate, Jennifer, or Kate, or Angela if I, if I'm, if that's, if that's the issue. Because Kate said, well, it was kind of talked about at a high level, but no one ever tried to really calculate or, or whatever. And, and so I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to sort of explain for myself why.
Right. So, so that, that type of action has been seen more as a, as a project type, as something that there would be interest in attempting to receive funding to start working on that with maybe a consultant and in where water can be moved around, where a different aquifer would better benefit, where it would maybe have less effect on the stream flow, but we could still be getting that water source to somebody. That, that's a, a sort of a, a heavy load to look into. We have some of the data, but it would really ultimately require more funding for us to spend time working on that in order to show what the offsets would be. So we look at it on, as a, a future project, essentially.
All right. But there's two parts, there's two pieces of these plans. One is calculating how much you have to offset, which is looking at development patterns, consumptive use, et cetera. And then there's, then you come up with your projects to try to offset. So it sounds like Commissioner Edwards is saying, why, why aren't we looking at it on the first indicator in terms of could it mitigate how much has to be offset to begin with? I think that's what he was asking.
Yes, that, that is my concern, that we're going to make policy without having all of the information. And I, I guess I can put it into three categories. You can go to the state website right now. It's just a quick look. And you'll see that Lacey, Tumwater and Olympia are pumping from a very deep aquifer and they have leakage in the many millions of gallons a day that is not accounted for, except it's all in the upper strata where the leakage is taking place. And that's all quantified at the state site because the comparison between what is delivered through meters versus what is pumped and the difference is the leakage. And so that's all quantified. So that's really easy to, to use as an example. And then for maybe that lower strata, if you, this goes back to the WRA 13, but it's a good example, like the Tumwater municipality runs the golf course down in the valley and they use a lot of water on the golf course. Well, 90% of that goes back into recharge into the river's aquifer, but it's pumped out of a very deep well aquifer. And then things like what is going on with LOT where they're doing recharge, I mean, that's easy to quantify too. That's millions of gallons that they're recharging back into an upper strata aquifer. So it's not rocket science to kind of rough it out. And I just hate to move forward knowing that somewhere down the line, there could be litigation that develops because somebody doesn't think we did our due diligence. And then we're on the hook for not doing something right. And that becomes unfortunate. You know, we lost $16 million because we didn't do something right on the gravel mine down at Maytown. That's a big hit. And who saw that coming?
If, if Angela or Jennifer think that they could add to this, please jump in. But I think when we're calculating the amount that we're trying to offset, we're accounting for permit-exempt well use. So things like municipal water and industrial uses wouldn't be calculated for this process. So it's more things, those permanent exempt wells, we have a lot less data on.
Well, I mean, I have, regardless of whatever you're using as part of your calculation, the reality is how many gallons are shifted from one location to another location. And the main gist of this whole thing is to maintain in-stream flow. So regardless of where that water comes from, what its usage and when it's replenished into the system, it adds to that in-stream flow. That, so that's kind of where I'm kind of at odds with the whole process. I just want to get it right. I, I think everything, I think all public policy needs to have all the correct information before the public policy is, is put together. Otherwise, it's incorrect. And why do something that we know is incorrect right off the bat? That doesn't ever make sense to me.
So I guess all I would add is that the technical and project work groups for these RIAA plans are listed in the plans. They can include a lot of expertise and hydrogeologist expertise and otherwise, including representatives from, you know, some of the organizations, the cities, LOT. There's consultants that were on board to help review these calculations. So there was a lot of technical work put into these plans. I did, I would have a question, I guess, and maybe this is for Angela, about when Ecology is reviewing these plans, is there sort of a science and technical review component to that to ensure that the fundamental assumptions behind the calculations are in line with the state law?
Sure. I'm happy to chime in. Yes, that is absolutely a part of our review. We have a Stream Flow Restoration Technical Team that a lot of times works together on these reviews, along with regional management staff. I will also note that a hydrogeologist by the name of Tom Colhane was on point throughout this process for WRA 13 and 14 as a big part of Ecology's technical team to be part of our committee meetings and technical work group meetings to provide input and clarifications and insight along the way. And that same staff member will be in charge of the technical review if these plans are submitted to Ecology. So there is that, that coordination and that consistency. And that will be in, in line with the, the discussions that the committee had along the way since that staff member was, was a big part of those. And, and to give his, his input and expertise along the way, along with the, the technical consultants. the way, along with the technical consultants.
I just, I got to throw in there, it's all well and fine to have that information and those individuals involved. And I'm not saying anything disparaging against any of those folks. I don't know any of them. But I know when a court, when a case goes in front of the jury in litigation, for an example, and they bring in their experts, and they've also got the water logs from the state and from the municipalities, and they take everything into consideration, then if there's ever any private agenda that affected the outcome of an earlier study, and that's shown to be the case, then the damages are increased tremendously in that litigation. And so I just want to make sure that we get it all right, it's above board, and this business of reviewing after the fact just does not make sense to me. Because after the fact, we may be putting restrictions on individuals that feel they've lost a property right or a water right or whatever it is. It's just there's so many variables that develop farther down the road that it just makes it so crucial that we get our facts right before we implement public policy. So that's how come I'm kind of being a stickler on this. I don't want to see another Maytown.
Just remember the context in which this all arose. Washington Supreme Court said, "You may not issue any development permit based on permanent-exempt wells." And the legislature raced around to come up with a suitable, reasonable timeline to address that, and that's why it's called the Hearst Fix. And the timelines might be shorter than what would result in perfect analysis and science, but that was a creature of legislators wanting to allow counties to issue development permits in rural areas based on permanent-exempt wells. So you can say that, you know, we need years more study and analysis, but the result might be that we're not going to be able to have any development now based on the Hearst decision. So we have to understand that there was a balance struck. We're past halfway through this briefing. We haven't gotten to RIA 13, so let's move to RIA 13, because I know there are more contentious issues involved there.
Okay. So the Deschutes watershed is predominantly located in Thurston County. The watershed that extends to Lewis County is forest land, and we also have some of the cities in the planning unit, like Olympia, Tumwater, and Lacey. Since I've previously gone over how the plans were developed, I'll stick to projects and implementation policies and actions for this briefing. I just want to go over the projects briefly. These are projects that have identified Thurston County as a potential partner, but there are a few others that can be found in the draft plan that involve other entities. Like the other plans, there's a range of project types here. Donnelly Drive Infiltration Galleries is an example of a potential project that is, that was, that is located on the county CIP that had enough overlap in the plan's goals to bring it over to this process to see if funding could be available for it. So that's a good example of some overlap in our water planning. There is more information on all of these project types in the plan, if there are any specific questions on them. But like in the other plans, they are largely projects that would still require feasibility studies.
I guess most of my questions are kind of intertwined, and I've already expressed my concerns. When it comes to the Olympia, I think it is, their big springs were, not springs, because they went to deep well activity, they turned the springs over to the Niskwali tribe, I believe, and then they put in some deep well systems, like 400 feet or something. And that's actually drawn out of the Niskwali aquifer, and the discharge of that water is in the Deschutes aquifer. So is there consideration given for that recharge amount?
I don't believe so. There was a lot of uncertainty on how to handle information like that that goes between the watershed plans. I don't think that that's considered at this time, no.
Okay. County manager's got his hands up here, sir.
Thank you. I can't, it's so small, I wouldn't yell at people. Go ahead, Renell.
Thank you. Maybe I can, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep. Maybe elaborate a little more in detail, and goes back to Commissioner Minster stated in the Hearst decision. The Hearst decision, as we knew it, it halted development across the state. And that was the issues that we were dealing with four years ago. The legislature passed this Hearst fix, in a way. And as Angela stated, it's very prescriptive in the law, as there's so many different wires, the limitations on how many gallons per day can we draw, and also very prescriptive as to when and how this plan needs to be in place. And also provides the, is very prescriptive also, I believe, that if we don't reach a consensus, as Angela stated, the Department of Ecology is going to approve a plan, and we have to live with it. And I understand this is, nobody likes where we are, in a way. Nobody liked how the Hearst decision was stated. In my opinion, I never liked how the legislature passed this fix. But unfortunately, it's placed on statute as to how we need to move forward on this. And also within the water consumptions, infiltration, and all that, I believe each of the wires went through a modeling approach on the hydraulics related to each of the wires. It takes, at a higher level, how the consumption, how the infiltration, how that affects the inflow of the watersheds. There may be a lot of elements in there that was included, may not included, but that's the difficulties when we go through a modeling approach to determine what would be the best ways to move forward. Those projects identify on all the different wires. Again, it's an attempt to meet the requirements of the state law in order for us to continue on issuing permits with our development. It may be that probably if we don't reach a consensus, and that is entirely up to the board, has to like to proceed, then ecology is going to implement a plan they have to live with. And unfortunately, those are the rules of engagement, I understand, as of today. So and I don't want to come across it, I want to dismiss or diminish any feedback the commissioners have in terms of the timing, in terms of the technical elements, including or not, on the plans. But we're facing with this requirement, they would just perhaps we need to consider.
Could I comment, sir? Respecting the county manager's position, I think everything he said there is true and correct. But in my opinion, we never know what the future is going to bring. And so what I'll just make mention of, because most of us are familiar with what just happened in the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court just threw out a law that was on the books for about 40 years and said, "This isn't right." For whatever reason, we don't have to determine why they said that. But now, we're going to be faced with all kinds of litigation about who we turn loose, who we don't turn loose, what case stemmed from an earlier case. We're going to have to deal with probably restitution and compensation for incarcerated individuals. Hard telling where it's going to go. And that's the kind of thing I'm trying to get ahead of, that unknown, who would have thought a year ago we would be faced with that? It's going to be mostly the state's problem, but the counties are going to be stuck with a big portion of that, just trying to figure it all out. And that's why I want to make sure that if possible, we don't use the excuse that we're on a timeline and that we need to just accept the status quo because that's what we're given to deal with. I think at least we may need to make a cursory examination of all the facts that are readily available without going into an in-depth consultant review, because this information is readily available. And it's not rocket science. You just go to the websites and find out on the leakage issue. Very easy to compute the millions of gallons of leakage. Well, the leakage takes place in the upper aquifer, it's just the way it is. I've been involved in water systems in the past. So it's not that I'm trying to sound like a know-it-all at all, I just want to make sure we get this right so that we don't end up in a situation down the road that's detrimental to the taxpayers of Thurston County. So that's kind of where I'm coming from.
In, with respect to, say, RIA 14 plan, what is it that's in the plan that's got you concerned? Because all the plan does is come up with a calculation, maybe it's too high from what you're saying, and then come up with projects, good projects that will enhance water, stream flow, offset. And if we overshoot there, well, we got more water, awesome. So what is it, what is it that's in the plan that you're worried about?
I guess.
Put it to anybody in the RIA 14 plan.
Okay, the information that was submitted by the Squawson tribe, for an example, if we were to include that, we'd run up against quite a few things that could be detrimental. I mean, just one of the simple things is senior water rights or such. And if we try to implement some of this stuff, I think we're going to be in court. And I don't want to be in court, I don't have to be in court. I'd like to accommodate the tribe on reasonable issues as well, so that they can go on doing their traditional thing. But I can't do that, I can't in good conscience vote for something like that that in the future is going to bring litigation against the county. So.
Nothing could possibly be less of a litigation risk than a request to a legal agency to update a rule in the way they see legal and fit. It is essentially passing the buck on the litigation risk to another entity.
Okay, well, I.
So I don't see, I don't see how that argument bears on the proposed language from the tribe, especially if you remove item one, which is going to be my suggestion, and simply say that we'd like to update the rule and make it, you know, consistent and enforceable. Actually, that's trying to, that's trying to patch litigation holes and risks, not create them, and putting the burden onto someone else, not us saying, "Here's what you should do," it's saying, "Hey, you know, this is within your realm, can you do your job and patch some holes if we think there's a problem?" I think it's the exact opposite. I think it's trying to avoid litigation risk rather than create it.
Might I ask, when you say item one, are you referring to the communication we got from Jeff Dickinson?
Yes, there was a proposed language, and it was one sentence. And my suggestion as a compromise, because we're so late in the game, was to just remove item one from there, because we didn't really get into that with Jeff. I know it's been discussed in the RIA group, but the commissioners were not involved in that.
I.
Our discussion with them last week was about updating the RIA 13 rule. So my suggestion was going to be that we simply say, "Recommend ecology, update the 40-year-old RIA 13 rule to reflect change conditions and new information, and make the rule effective, consistent, and enforceable." And that is the exact opposite of creating litigation risk for it. I think that shores up a lot of potential litigation that may get applied.
Yeah.
The back page.
I'm sorry, I had missed where you were at on item one. I was looking at the front page, and I see on the back, you're saying, "Get rid of one and just go along with two and three," right?
Yeah, and just condense it into one sentence without the numbers, because you don't, you just take out number one and leave it like there. And to me, it, I think what I'm worried about is the loss of local control over these issues. And I think we bear two, we bear two avenues of risk of losing local control. One is that we can't come to a consensus on plan. And therefore have the process that Angela described, which is completely out of our hands.
Okay.
The second was, we end up with an insufficient plan, and we subject ourselves to litigation from the tribe or elsewhere because of the things that are identified on page one of just email. And I think that just a simple request to update the rule might avoid both of those avenues of risk, get us a consensus agreed upon plan. When ecology, if and when ecology ever gets to the point of updating that rule, the county can weigh in on what we think that update ought to look like. We're not agreeing to a prescriptive set of policy changes with the tribe. They can weigh in, we can weigh in. All we're agreeing, all we would be agreeing on today is that that rule is out of date, counterproductive in some ways, creates litigation risk, and we'd like it updated, it's going to enhance the overall watershed plan if that's done. That's a recommendation. We're not telling ecology what they have to do. We're not telling ecology how they have to do it. So that was my suggestion, because it seemed like the safest course, based on everything I've heard over the last month, in terms of an approach forward.
I guess I'm, I didn't hear your first suggestion, but I mean, you articulate the situation very well, sir, and I agree with you. I think that is a good way to go. I didn't know that's where you were at. I'm sorry, I did not hear that recommendation earlier. So it looks like I did a lot of talking I didn't need to do.
I agree with Commissioner Minster's recommendation of two and three, and taking out the numbers.
I think that's where I'm at, too. You make a good argument, sir.
Can we hear Angela's, kind of, since she's here, can we hear her point of view on that proposal?
Yeah, I think that will be helpful, because that is the purpose. When you saw the requested, the proposed language, the Squawson tribe wanted to incorporate on the, in the plan, then some of the logistical steps as to how this could be taken, and that is why he asked the staff to reach out to ecology, are the suggestion, that was a good suggestion by his staff, to hear their perspective as to how this could play out as, to move forward.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. I think, you know, from our perspective, I'll speak to it, kind of from a process standpoint, throughout the development of the plan, we used a consensus-based process. So all elements of the plan as it is were agreed upon by consensus. And any additions to the plan language at this point would have to go through that same process. So if we were to receive a request to add information to the plan, I would have to go back to the committee, ask them to reconvene, and evaluate from a consensus process if this language was appropriate to include in the plan. And that includes me as a committee member vetting this language with my ecology management as any other committee member would do. From a timeline standpoint, the draft, the final draft plan was last discussed by the committee at our January 27 meeting. After that, the plan was sent out for local review. And as Caitlin has on the screen right now, many jurisdictions are in the process of reviewing the draft plan and coordinating with their management to be able to vote to approve the plan at our April meeting. And if we were to ask the committee to reconvene and add new language, that may start that process over again. I can't speak to that process for the entities that are undergoing their current review. So the, you know, the concern is that we would have a delay in our timeline. I would estimate it would be anywhere from four to six weeks, possibly, if some entities do need to fully restart their review and approval process. And that would delay getting the plan to ecology ultimately. We've said along the way that we need sufficient time as an agency to review a plan if we receive an approved plan from a committee, and that includes a SEPA public comment period in addition to technical and recommendation memos that will be submitted to the Director of Ecology. So we on our end need sufficient time, but that being said, we'll do everything that we can to review a plan when, if it's approved by a committee to come in. So, you know, I'll speak to it from a concern about the timeline, but also along the way, ecology has been open to receiving recommendations that, you know, that may include. include recommendations regarding rulemaking. Understanding that our, our standpoint is that this plan does not create an obligation for any entity, but we are open to receiving recommendations if they're stated as recommendations and making sure that it's first and foremost, the recommendation comes from a point of consensus from the entire committee.
And another item that was discussed is possibly including language, a letter in our compendium, which has all of the information that our planning unit has not technically consensually agreed upon, but parties were still interested in including. So one option could be to propose writing this letter of interest with the Squawson Island Tribe and any other jurisdictions that are interested and providing signatures for those who would like to provide this recommendation to each, to ecology without, without affecting that timeline or having concern about not being able to submit it in time.
So, thank you. I, I understand the timing issue. I spoke with the representatives from Tom Water this morning and they have not had their presentations due. I could have this, it's one sentence and I could have it in Dan Smith's hands, you know, in five minutes for Tom Water consideration, just as an example. I'm glad to hear that there's receptivity to a stated recommendation because that was something that, you know, wasn't, we weren't 100% sure about. So that's good. And the third thing, though, is that I would understand the power of the timing argument a little more if there was certainty to, we had a consensus approved plan, but my understanding from the meeting we had is that that wasn't guaranteed. So if this gets us to the consensus, that's very powerful to me because then we have the assurance that we have a plan that, you know, meets the requirements of what ecology is going to be wanting to see before they would consider approval. So, so again, if it was a complete rewrite, you know, it'd be one thing, but the addition of a sentence that has been not anything new, as I understand from Caitlin, this has been discussed previously. I mean, meaning stakeholders ought to know what is meant by this sentence because it's something that was presented. I, I was not at the meeting in September when this was first brought to board attention. So I'm just coming kind of on, up to speed on this myself. But my understanding is that the RIAA 13 group have, would be familiar with the concept proposed in this proposed sentence. Is that correct, Kate?
For the most part, I don't know if you could add to this, Angela, but I do believe that this language is a little bit different than that which was originally reviewed. Yeah.
Yes, this, this language is, is different in that it's, it's stated upfront as a recommendation for rulemaking. I think where this language may, maybe previously was somewhat addressed was an individual policy recommendation components. And all that I'll, I'll really say to wrap that up is the plan as it is reflects how the committee reached consensus. So when we maybe did previously discuss this language, it, it, it may not currently reflect all entities' feelings of consensus on this language. I, I can't speak to that right now.
Kate, could you back up the slides just a couple to the in-stream flow rulemaking slide? Yeah, so just to remind everyone around at least this part, this was the consensus language here in quotations to investigate and determine needed revisions to the in-stream flow rule. So it's supportive still of that, but maybe isn't as strong a push as what you've heard requested by the Squawson Island Tribes. But this is where the committee got to in a consensus process.
Would, would that be asking too much if you said something about considering all facts available or something like that? Maybe I'm asking too much, I don't know, just.
Well, the, the proposed language says reflecting change conditions and new information.
Yes, I, I see that. New information is the key that seems like we didn't have, but as long as we go along with that. That's all. Thank you.
So I, Commissioner?
Yep.
So is the, I see the current language that has been reached by, approved by consensus. And, and the proposed language by the Squawson Island Tribe, is it intent to replace that or just to add to it? I think it's add to it as opposed to replace it.
I think we would have to check back in with the tribe on exactly what, they did not provide a strikeout underlying version that I am aware of.
Because what, what we have on, on the consensus approval language is very prescriptive. And it seems to me the, the two points the commissioners will like to consider moving forward is in addition to that, they create, they, they provide the, some language for DOE to consider approving the 40-year-old language. So I don't think we, we need to, at least from what, how I read it, that we need to replace all this language with the, only the two bullet points.
I don't see anything, yeah, I mean, I would, I would concur. We could check back in because I don't see, I don't see that they're mutually exclusive or contradictory.
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I see a problem if we include everything submitted by the tribe and just knock out that one sentence. Because I don't think, I don't even think we have the authority to do certain things. I don't know if we can take water rights away from people that have long-established rights. Are you talking about going along with everything on the front page?
No, no. We're looking at the slide that's up on the screen.
In, in the current language that is there?
First paragraph of what's in the draft plan now. And the question is, if the board wanted to add this slightly stronger statement from the tribe, would it be in addition to the current draft language or replace the draft language? I think it's the primary question.
So, yeah, my, you might, the way I read this language, I think it should stand, my suggestion for the board to consider is to add, in addition, the committee recommends that ecology initiate rulemaking to update the 40-year-old RIAA 13 rule to reflect changes, conditions, and new information, and make the rule effective, legally consistent, enforceable. So I don't think it's one or the other. I think it's adding to this language that probably makes a little more stronger argument. And that will be my suggestion for the board to consider.
So leave, leave this paragraph up.
Yeah, it's, in addition.
Add this sentence, too, the one you just.
In addition, the committee recommends that ecology initiate rulemaking to update the 40-year-old as you discussed, the two bulleted items.
That sounds good to me.
I was in the chair.
Ty, what did you say? I couldn't hear you.
I said, I'm, I said I was pausing because I didn't see either commissioner in her chair, so.
No, they're reading.
We're, we had to get up here and read about what it is, both of us.
Okay.
I, I don't know, but, I mean, are we saying, go ahead and close it if we say there's a drought, though? I mean, it's, it looks like we're going to be taking action before we get done.
And there were three issues brought forward by the tribes. There was the in-stream flow rule, there was the drought response, and there was the remind me permit exempt well withdrawal limits. And they provided language on all three of those. And so we do have three slides. We just were showing you the in-stream rule existing language. This is the drought response existing language excerpted that you could compare with what the tribe submitted.
But, but that's the, on this particular slide, Jennifer, the commissioners suggested that number one, which is restricted permit exempt wells withdrawal amounts is, is, is out. It does relate to the drought periods as is stated in here. So what I'm hearing is the board is, is interested in, in seeing items two and three from what the Squawson Island Tribe provided, not necessarily number one, which deals with this item.
And I just, I want to be clear, I'm, my, my proposal was really not a comment on the merits of those proposals. It was just really a reflection of what Angela said about where we are in the process and what I've anticipated Caitlin. Just trying to keep it simple and being responsive to what I heard Fox Island representatives taking to at our briefing room. They made passing reference to these other two policies, but it was clear to me that what they really felt invested in, in terms of wanting to improve the plan, was to see this recommendation for updating the rule. And so that's where I'm focusing my attention at this late juncture in the process. So we don't, so it doesn't go sideways. It's, hopefully, that's just hope to get everyone's thumbs up around that table.
All right, so Kate, you can back that slide up again to the in-stream flow rule. I don't have the same number one, two, and three that you may have on your hand up, so I'm trying to follow.
That's what we're up against.
Yeah, is, is the, the.
We're talking two languages here.
Yeah.
You have the email from Jeff Dixon, available, Jennifer. On the, on the back page is when, for the consideration of what kind of commissioners, the language, which states the committee recommends, it does the, the proposed language.
Oh, okay.
The committee recommends that ecology initiate rulemaking and it states, number one, restrict permits and wells withdrawals, withdrawal amounts during normal conditions and drought periods. Number two, update the 40-year-old RIAA 13 rule to reflect changes, change conditions, and new information. That's probably what Commissioner Edwards was looking for. And number three, make the rule effective, legally consistent, and enforceable. So my suggestion to the board was to leave the current draft language as approved by the committee and add this, in addition, the committee recommends that ecology initiate rulemaking to, it starts with not adding number two.
So would be update the 40-year-old RIAA 13? Okay.
But I don't want to be marching out to the public and saying, hey, you've got to shut your water off and all that kind of stuff. Well, on some of that earlier language that was up there.
So I, I do want to clarify really quick. This is not at all to dissuade you. I just want to make sure that the information is known after some discussion that I had with ecology management about how the process of rulemaking would put everything on the table despite what our recommendation is. So it would leave open input from any jurisdiction and organization in the state, open up a state comment period. And most likely, this is going to shift based on who comments and what the interests are. So just so that you are aware, the rulemaking process is, it can get fairly intricate and involve more than what we're recommended, recommending at this time.
Jeff made that really clear last week, so, so, you know, and again, that's where I'm, that's where I'm pointing out that we don't necessarily have to support the same set of changes as any other party. County can recommend what is needed appropriately for, for us, but. The tribe recognized that risk, too. They said this may not go in the way we want it to go because other things may be on the table and other changes get made, but doesn't mean you just accept the changes that are was by any one party. So I, I understand that, I hope you. But I think they made a compelling case that the rule is out of date and, and needs updating. And I, I trust that ecology will make appropriate adjustments to bring things up.
So process-wise, is there a way to circulate that additional language change, just that change to the planning unit members prior to the vote, I guess, on April 21st in a way that would have sort of an expedited review of just that addition? So that's one avenue. The second avenue would be to create a, a letter that would be attached to this plan in the compendium as Kate described, which would be signed perhaps even jointly by the board and the tribe that would support that language.
I, I guess I have a question is, if we eliminate one on the back page, is the tribe going to sign? Are we going to have a consensus?
I, I think if I made, the tribe was making a compelling argument about the need to update the rules.
And that's the main thing, is what you're saying.
Yeah, and I think number two and number three keys on that main concern, the tribe suggested last week.
Okay.
I had a separate meeting prior to that and it was made clear, and it was pretty clear to me that they were going to be satisfied with any, they wanted to see where the county and tribe's interests could align. And they understood that it might not be on, on the whole list. But they didn't want to miss an opportunity to, to have alignment where there was alignment. And so, and that's how I'm interpreting it, is that if this is where the board's comfortable with at this late hour, then I think that should be a big step toward consensus, you know, a consensus. And, you know, the way I look at that, at this, if the tribe can be a powerful force for implementation of this plan and success of this plan, and to the extent that they're heard and that they're excited about the result that we get, I think that just helps us, helps all the stakeholders as we move into implementation.
So could, could I suggest a step forward, Commissioner, since we're over time?
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry about that. Yep, go ahead.
So what I'm hearing is the board is interested in, in adding language to the current draft language that has been approved by consensus by the committee. And the addition includes as follows, in addition, the committee recommends that ecology initiate rulemaking to update the 40-year-old RIAA 13 rule to reflect change conditions and new information and make the rule effective, legally consistent, and enforceable. Period. The board is not supporting any other addition to any other language of, of the plan. This is the, what I believe the board is supporting, only changing, adding to this current language on this slide, no other languages, no other additions.
Tom Water? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I think that'll work.
Yeah.
If I could ask, go ahead, Angela.
Thank you. I just want to add that, you know, as it is, I understand that this, this proposed language has really just been discussed between Squawson Island Tribe and Thurston County. And again, any additional language that is added to the plan would have to be agreed upon by consensus by the entire committee. So I just can't guarantee that if this new language comes in front of the committee that it would be identical to what you've just stated as your proposal. We would certainly review that recommendation, but it would be open to the committee for discussion. That's it.
Yeah, I understand that. And I wanted to mention that if this decision could be shot to Dan Smith and Tom Water, I understand that there's a conversation happening tomorrow morning in Tom Water and it might be good to have that for their discussion, consideration.
So Angela, thank you very much. I, I really appreciate that perspective. And, and what I believe at this point is, is just submit this addition to the team to go through the consensus process. If for any reason that doesn't materialize in a, in a full consensus, then we need to bring back to the commissioners as to what the next steps will be.
We're well over time and we have a 2:30 that we're now late for. So if there's nothing else, then adjourn. Last call for comment of this man. Thank you, Angela. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.